Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, January 7, 2016. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, I feel about with me. Lord, thank you for all the blessings in our lives. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our community. God, we need you. We need you here in Murfreesboro and Tennessee and in this country. And we pray for your wisdom in our decisions. Just be with us tonight, and as always, we are thankful for you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to wish you everyone a Happy New Year. And before we start, I want to say thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department. We started our New Year's Day with the Better Borough Project 5K. Councilmember Shacklet ran in it. Councilmember Smotherman was there. Had several people from city staff who ran and had 20 some odd people from our fire department who competed. But all in all, we expected to maybe have a turnout of 200, and we ended up with a turnout of almost 600 in the first year. So we were really pleased, and it was a great way to kick off the New Year. So I want to say thanks to all the people who helped and really excited about what our future holds with the Better Borough Project.
Those who warmed up during the run might want to remember that pole bear plunge is this Saturday.
That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we will, this Saturday. And also, city league basketball starts off this Saturday, so lots of good things that are going on. All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you.
Here are no comments. I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now, let's get back up to ceremonial items. One thing I did not mention, we had a great retirement ceremony for Chief Christman. And I want to thank all the staff members who put that together. It was a really good day and really fun part. We had the TBI Director, Director Quinn, who came down. And I think every law enforcement official from several counties was here. So it was the first meeting without Chief Christman. But we'll move into our minutes. You have the November 19, 2015, regular meeting; December 3, 2015, special meeting; December 3, 2015, regular meeting; and December 10, 2015, regular meeting.
No comments. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And moving to third readings, consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15057 amending Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 25 and a Quarter, dash 2, dash 23, dash 25, and dash 29 regarding exempt signs, temporary signs, and certain nonconforming signs, 2015-803.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
No.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Second readings, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z63 is on approximately 12.6 acres located along Osburn Lane, is residential, single-family, 12, RS 12 district.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15067 amending the 2015-2016 budget, the Third Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Move to new business. Pursuant to Resolution 15RPH65 adopted by the City Council on November 19, 2015, conduct three separate public hearings to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services; two, annexation; and three, zoning for approximately 70.1 acres located along Blackman Road, 2015-508 and 2015-427. Notice of said public hearings were published in the December 21, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider the annexation and a plan of services for property that is located along Blackman Road, State Route 840, and Manson Pike. The property that's being considered for annexation is shaded both orange and blue on the map before you. The area shaded yellow is the area that is the current Murfreesboro City limits. And you can see that the property is contiguous with current city limits along its southern boundary and its eastern side boundary. The area for which annexation was requested is shaded orange, and the area shaded blue includes rights of ways of the three separate streets, Blackman Road, State Route 840, and Manson Pike. Those were included as additional study area, so the combined total acreage for the requested area and additional study area is 70.1 acres. This parcel does have access to Blackman Road, however, it does not have any access to State Route 840 or to Manson Pike. The portion of Manson Pike for which annexation has been recommended is contiguous with an area of property that was annexed last year. When that property was annexed, and I think there was just a miscommunication and staff didn't include that in the annexation, we wanted to clean that up at this time, include the right-of-way in front of that property with this annexation so that the review authority for that right-of-way would be within the Murfreesboro City limits. If that right-of-way were to remain in the county, then the developers of that property, and we are anticipating plans to come in this month, would need to get approvals from both the city and county. But to make the process smoother for all parties involved, and for the city to regulate the connections into the road Manson Pike, we have recommended that that be added. It's not directly contiguous with the requested area, however, consultation with our Assistant City Attorney, he stated that we could do that and that it was actually a good idea. The area along 840 and Blackman Road are contiguous with this property. A plan of services has been included in your packets, and you've had that available to read. The city will be able to provide services upon annexation. The Water and Sewer Department has a definition available, and I believe that it means that sewer is within 250 feet of the property. Sanitary sewer is currently not within 250 feet of this property. It's located in the developing, single-family subdivision to the east. As that subdivision develops, the sewer will come closer to this property and become available. And of course, any sewer connection would have to conform with the policies and procedures of the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department. There is a companion zoning change request, which will be the subject of a public hearing later. This public hearing is for you to consider the matter of annexation and the matter of the plan of services. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing at which they recommended the annexation and plan of services unanimously that evening, and I have the additional information in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Clyde Roundtree represents the applicant, and if you have any questions regarding the annexation request, I'll be glad to answer them. If you have questions regarding the plan of services, of course, staff is available.
Mayor, if I may, just to clarify, the agenda item stated that there would be three separate public hearings, and in fact, there will only be two. The first public hearing, as Ms. Green said, will cover both annexation and the plan of services, and in the second public hearing, will address just the zoning.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay. So we'll conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for and annexation of approximately 70.1 acres along Blackman Road. We'll ask if you come to the podium to speak for or against. State your name. State your address. If you'll keep your comments to three minutes unless you're representing a group, and then you have five minutes. And we will answer all questions at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 15RPH65 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 70.1 acres located along Blackman Road simultaneous with annexation Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow applicants, 2015-508.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15RA65 to annex approximately 70.1 acres located along Blackman Road simultaneous with the effective date of zoning, Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow applicants. We're not ready yet. We still have to have the...
No, we've had the public hearing on both the plan of services and the annexation.
Okay.
We've just approved the plan of services, so now it's appropriate to consider the annexation.
Thank you.
Zoning or annexation?
Annexation.
Okay. This is for the annexation, the other one's for the plan of services. My fault, Mr. Lance. I'm still not used to this.
You could tell I was real sure of it.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion?
Do we have a public hearing?
No, this is for the, we already did for the plan of services and the annexation, which is what this is for.
Second. I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now conduct a public hearing on zoning of approximately 53 acres located along Blackman Road to be zoned Highway Commercial, CH District, approximately 42.8 acres, and Commercial Fringe, CF District, 10.4 acres simultaneous with annexation Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow applicants, 2015-427. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This second public hearing is for you to consider the adoption of an ordinance to change the zoning of the property for which you both, you considered the annexation and plan of services. This property does exclude the rights of way, so you can see that the acreage is different because it includes just the requested area that which we saw before, which is a total of 53 acres. The map shows you the parcel in colors both orange and purple. The orange area is the area for which the applicants have requested a CH zoning, and that's Commercial Highway District. And the purple area is the area for which they've requested a CF zoning, and that's Commercial Fringe District. This property is located, contiguous with Blackman Road, State Route 840, and Manson Pike, and is contiguous with current city limits on both its eastern and southern property lines. The property to the east is zoned RS 12, that single-family residential district, and is a developing-city, single-family subdivision. To the south, you can see the properties are zoned CH and CF. Those are also Commercial Highway and Commercial Fringe Districts. The property owners do not have a specific development plan yet, but they think that this is a good candidate for commercial zoning. They wanted to mimic the request that was made to the south, leaving the Commercial Fringe strip between the Commercial Highway zoning, so you can see that that line would extend all the way up to Manson Pike if you do approve this request, with the Commercial Fringe separating the Commercial Highway from the existing, single-family zoning. The owners wish to have the potential for this property to develop with various commercial uses. This property is located within the general development plans for the Blackman community, and I have an excerpt in your materials that show the map from that plan. And the map specifically recommends that this area develop as an office/distribution, which is an area that capitalizes on the accessibility and visibility from State Route 840. And the requested zoning would not be inconsistent with the office/distribution classification in the Blackman Land Use Plan. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing the evening, the same evening as the annexation, and their recommendation to you is that you do approve the zoning change request to zone approximately 42.8 acres, the area shaded orange, to CH, Commercial Highway District, and approximately 10.4 acres, the area shaded purple, to CF, Commercial Fringe District. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is representing the applicant and is in attendance at tonight's meeting. Staff is, of course, available if you have any questions regarding this rezoning change request.
What's the width of that CF area?
Recall it being somewhere around 200 feet. Clyde, do you remember? 250. Yep, 250. 250.
Any questions for Ms. Green?
The only ones who understand these. Go ahead.
Got to have a public hearing, right?
Yes. Here, Mr. Lance.
You have considered the matters of annexation and plan of services and recommended those as a resolution, and this would be a public hearing to consider the zoning change only.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll now open the public hearing for any comments on this zoning change. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 150Z65 to zone an area located along Blackman Road to Highway Commercial, CH District, and Commercial Fringe, CF District, Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow applicants, 2015-427.
No comments. Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item seven. Pursuant to Resolution 15RPH69 adopted by the City Council on December 10, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 3.9 acres located along Otter Trail from Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, to Residential Multi-Family, RM16 District, approximately 2.1 acres, and from Residential Multi-Family 16, RM16 District, to Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, approximately 1.8 acres. Swanson Development applicant, 2015-428. Notice of said public hearing was published in the December 21, 2015, issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you. This next public hearing is for you to consider the rezoning change request made by the Swanson Development, and it's for a parcel that's located south of Jack Burns Drive, which is shown on the map before you. This property is also located west of Otter Trail, just across from the new school, which was built on the property labeled as RS15, which is the overall Creek Elementary School. You can see overall Creek is just to the east of the property. This parcel has several different zoning classifications on it, particularly RZ, which is Zero Lot Line Residential District, and RM16. It's surrounded by various types of zonings as well. To the north is RM16 property, RM16's multifamily residential district. To the east is property zoned RS15, and that's the location of a school which got a special use permit to be in a single-family zoning district. And then to the south, this property is zoned CL, Local Commercial District. And then to the property that's contiguous with this parcel, to the west is zoned RS15, and is developed with an institutional group assembly, also known as a church. This parcel looks like it's several different parcels, but it's actually just one. Before the streets were constructed, and the school was constructed, the City Council and Planning Commission formulated some zonings that would be appropriate for this property. The Swanson family has endeavored to design a master plan, and after getting more detailed information, they'd like to rezone a portion of the property, approximately 1.8 acres, that is currently zoned RM16, or multifamily residential district, to RZ, and approximately 2.1 acres from its current RZ zone to RM16. Essentially, this is basically swapping areas. They're not exactly the same size, 2.1 versus 1.8 acres, but they're trading property that's currently zoned RM16 with property zoned RZ, and that's after getting some additional information. On the site and the topography and how it lays out, the zoning change request could result in a density, an increase in density of approximately six dwelling units in the RM16. There could be density bonuses if they provide the appropriate amenities as defined by the zoning ordinance. There are representatives of the applicant here this evening. If you have any questions from them, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this matter, and their recommendation to you is that you do zone the properties as requested. If you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions from the council? All right, we'll conduct a public hearing. Consider rezoning an area located along Otter Trail to Residential Multi-Family 16, RM16 District, and Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, Swanson Development applicant, 2015-428. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? We'll open the public hearing. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. We will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 150Z69 to rezone approximately 3.9 acres along Otter Trail from Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, to Residential Multi-Family 16, RM16 District, approximately 2.1 acres, and from Residential Multi-Family 16 District, to Residential Zero Lot Line, RZ District, approximately 1.8 acres. Swanson Development applicant, 2015-428. Could I ask a question? Probably should have asked this earlier, but, and this is just for me because I don't understand this process. Is the whole PRD, the RZ, all of this section here, is that PRD? What constitutes the PRD?
There's no property, none of it is own PRD.
Well, I thought it said...
I have another map on the screen. I don't know if it helps. This is an ortho map, and it outlines the properties or the areas being requested in. It's all zoned RZ and RM16. There's no PRD.
Okay, where was that?
Maybe you've gone down to a future agenda item, which it is own PRD.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay. Okay.
And this is mostly, this parcel is undeveloped currently.
Okay. All right, thank you. Apologize. That's an odd configuration for that RM16. Is that access to that area and all that? I guess it will have to come through the RZ?
Yeah, the RZ has direct access to Jack Burns Drive, and then that RM16 will have direct access to Otter Trail, which, there's a street to the south that will tie it into Veterans Parkway, so it could get to Veterans Parkway through both Jack Burns and the street to the south. The topography, Murfreesboro is mostly flat, and you know that better than I do. This has a little bit of change, which is, I think, a big deal for us as a community because we don't see that significant of a change in topography, and that's what's kind of defined those lines that you're seeing, which aren't straight lines and are a little awkward.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Mr. La...
Aye.
Have a motion and a second?
Quick one.
I don't have a motion and a second.
I thought we did have a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
All right.
For approval?
For approval.
All right, like I said, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 15RPH66 adopted by the City Council on November 19, 2015, will conduct a public hearing to consider, one, adoption of plan of services, and, two, annexation for approximately 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court, 2015-507. Notice of said public hearing were published in the December 21, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Bromley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next public hearing tonight is for the annexation of property located along Foxfire Court. There is no companion zoning request, so we are just having one public hearing for this property with regards to the annexation and plan of services. The subject property is 5.96 acres. It is largely undeveloped with the exception of one, single-family residence, which is located at the southeast corner of the property. I've included a map that is zoomed out to kind of show you where the property is located. Foxfire Court is in a county subdivision located to the west of John R. Rice Boulevard and just to the east of Fortress Boulevard. Now, we'll zoom in on the property itself. You'll see that the property is directly to the south and to the west of existing single-family residential subdivisions in the unincorporated county, and the area colored in yellow on the map before you is the city limits. You'll notice that to the south and to the west of the subject property is the Preserve and the Villas at Indian Creek, which are residential developments in the county. The Preserve is a single-family detached development, and the Villas is a townhome development. The subject property, as I mentioned, has one, single-family residence on it. That single-family residence is accessed off of Foxfire Court. The property does also have access to a public right-of-way on Maya Drive, which you'll notice is the public right-of-way that stubs into it from the west. Maya Drive is a city street located in the Preserve at Indian Creek subdivision. The applicant who owns the property and resides on the property has submitted a petition for annexation to the city. She wishes to benefit from city services as well as tie a driveway into Maya Drive. We conducted the plan of services... We conducted the plan of services, or the survey of the various departments to draft our plan of services. We determined that in its current condition, there were some issues serving the subject property, specifically with our rolling services, police, fire, solid waste. None of the other homes on Foxfire Court are located in the city limits, and so police, fire, and solid waste all had issues with annexing the property in its current state. They all recommended that certain conditions be met in order for this property to be annexed. Specifically, I'll read over those conditions that were part of the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval on this annexation. Number one, that a new driveway must be established off of Maya Drive, because the only driveway on the property right now is off of Foxfire Court, and it is not very practical in its present condition for one house off of Foxfire Court to be in the city limits when there are numerous other houses on Foxfire Court that the police, fire, and solid waste departments would have to pass in order to get to this one house. The new driveway off of Maya Drive must be a minimum of 15 feet in width. That's per our fire department, so that a fire truck would be able to access the house in time of emergency. Number three, the new driveway must be of sufficient construction to support a fire apparatus, and a cross-section demonstrating this and sealed by a civil engineer should be submitted to the city engineering department for review and approval prior to construction. And number four, the address of the subject property shall be changed to a Maya Drive address. And all four of those conditions must be satisfied in order for the police, fire, and solid waste departments to be able to effectively provide service to the subject property. These conditions were communicated to Ms. Smith, the applicant, prior to the Planning Commission public hearing, and she understands the conditions that the city departments are requiring. If the city council looks favorably upon this annexation, the planning department and the legal department would respectfully request that any approval, or, excuse me, that the city council defer action on the plan of services and the annexation petition if the city council looks favorably upon this, and that deferral staff would request would be in effect until evidence has been provided that all four of those conditions have been met, at which time the staff, the city departments would feel comfortable with providing service to the subject property and would feel comfortable with the annexation. With that being said, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation request, subject to those four conditions. The property is contiguous with the existing city limits. The property owner has requested the annexation, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and Ms. Smith, the property owner and applicant, is also present if you have any questions for her.
Matthew? The staff comments say the driveway is to be minimum of 20. Is that incorrect?
That was the original staff comments. That was modified by the fire department prior to the Planning Commission's public hearing, and the letter accompanying the public hearing package reflects the new width of 15 feet, as does an updated plan of services in your agenda package.
Does staff feel comfortable that if these conditions are met, that this is a reasonable request?
Yes, sir.
And Mayor, to expand just a little bit, we're still in new territory in terms of annexation, and under the prior system, we would have gone ahead and had you, assuming you approved, had you considered on first reading, adoption of the plan of services and annexation, and then we would hold until third reading until the conditions are met. And that way, if she does not meet the conditions, then the ordinance goes away, you know, it's never adopted. On a resolution, it'll be effective on adoption. We looked at trying to write this so that it would be, the resolution would not be effective until the conditions are satisfied. That seemed kind of clumsy of how we would then come back and record that the conditions are satisfied, and after some discussion and thought about that, we concluded that it made most sense. If someone desires to make a motion to deny this, and that passes, okay, fine, then no problem. If there's not such a motion, then we would ask you to defer. We'll work with the applicant to get the conditions met. When they are met, we would come back, put this back on the agenda for approval. It's a little clumsy, but it's the system we've been given.
If this is annex, is approved, annexation is approved, what is, and there's no zoning request with it, what does it come in as?
It's zoned RM in the county, which is different from RRM. It stands for residential medium density, which is a single-family classification, and in that instance, it would come into the city with an interim zoning classification of RS15. It is staff's understanding from discussions with the applicant that she has no development intentions for the property. However, if tomorrow that changed and a developer came in, the RS15 zone would yield approximately 12 to 13 single-family lots on the property.
And an applicant, of course, would have the right to come in and request consideration of a different zoning.
So my question is, if we're, I guess we need to, we need to have a public hearing on this, and then staff is recommending deferral until the conditions are met?
Correct.
If the city council wishes to approve it, then we would recommend deferral. Otherwise, as Mr. Ives said, deny was the option as well.
Probably stated, maybe the negative statement is maybe better if council wishes to deny, then that's, if there's a motion to deny, then that would be voted on. If there's not a motion to deny, we would request a motion to defer.
I know you said, is there a septic issue on this house? Is there, are they going to connect to city sewer?
Not that I'm aware of. Ms. Smith has not indicated that there is. Sewer is available at the stub on Maya Drive. If she did intend to connect, that would be her responsibility and her expense to connect. I think one of the primary reasons that she does want to be annexed is to tie into Maya Drive. She can actually tie into Maya Drive with a driveway without being annexed, and we made her aware of that fact, and she, so that she still would like to be annexed. So we have proceeded with the application.
Public hearing, all right. Okay. We'll conduct a public hearing on plan of services for and annexation of approximately 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court. Linda Smith, applicant. Anyone's wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Did it get any more confusing? Thank you, State Ladies Lakers.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll consider for adoption Resolution 15R PS 66 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court simultaneous with annexation. Linda Smith, applicant, 2015-507. Does anybody have a motion other than to defer?
I think it would have been helpful if Linda Smith had have shown up and at least...
Is Linda Smith here?
Okay.
Linda, could you come to the microphone, please?
Could you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Linda, me personally, I'm a little confused as to why you want to do this. Will you simplify that for me, get it down to my level?
Yes, sir. I'm in the corner of an area that has no access to Fortress Boulevard. There's a Walmart, Camino Real, Sonic, public storage, all kinds of things out there, and I'd like to have access to that. And also, I've got a lot of land, so...
I understand. Thank you. You answered my question.
Ms. Smith, is, with this annexation coming through, are we expecting that the, not that it matters to us one way or another, because we're looking at it with your request, but is this looking to be developed at some point?
I'm not going to develop it, but I do have more land than I need.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion for deferral until the requirements are met, and then we can reevaluate.
Okay. Have a motion for deferral?
Second.
Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. If we deferred on the annexation, will we need to have, well, that would, I guess that would be it?
I get, I wasn't listening close enough. I would have assumed that defer, the plan of, consideration of plan of services and annexation both.
Yes.
Is that the intent?
Yes.
Everybody's nodding yes.
And the answer is...
There's no need to do it three times, so yes, let's include them all together.
Mr. Ives, you would think it wouldn't be this confusing, but it actually is pretty confusing following this process when you've done it the same way for so many years and...
I do understand we've, we're continuing to look at it to try to come up with a way to make it easier to follow and still follow the requirements of the amended statute, and we will continue to evaluate that.
And Ms. Smith, what we're saying, at least for me personally, is that we're not saying no, that we don't want you to do this. We're saying that until the requirements are met, then it's probably a little bit premature for us to be re-changing the zoning and everything. Once those requirements are met, I don't think you'll have any opposition. That's just me personally.
Okay, we'll move to item number nine. Pursuant to Resolution 15R PH 68 adopted by the City Council on December 10th, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately 91.5 acres in the planned residential development, PRD development, district located along Veterans Parkway, Sheffield Park, PRD. Beazer Homes is the applicant with 2015-426. Notice of said public hearing was published in the December 21st, 2015 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The subject property, as you can see on the map in front of you, is located along the south side of Veterans Parkway, just to the south of the intersection of St. Andrews Drive and Veterans Parkway, and just to the east of Armstrong Valley Road. This zoomed-in map, it is the map, or it is the property colored in purple. It is the current development known as Sheffield Park, which is a single-family residential development, zoned PRD, planned residential district. Sheffield Park was originally zoned as a PRD in 2006 under the name Brookside Murfrees Station, PRD, and that development never quite got off the ground. In 2013, Beazer Homes acquired the development and amended the PRD, calling it Sheffield Park, and amending some of the requirements of the PRD to fit its development program. The applicants have since run into some environmental concerns. Specifically, there are several wetlands on the subject property, which have made them reevaluate the plan. The wetlands are causing them to have certain areas of the site that are unusable, and in order to keep the lot yield at 236, which is what the, what the original planned development was approved for, they are making this amendment request to change the minimum lot sizes. The various minimum lot sizes of 8, 10, 12, and 15,000 square feet throughout the development will remain the same. However, the, how those are distributed through the development and the numbers of each of the categories are changing. Specifically, the numbers of 8,000-square-foot lots are increasing, and the numbers of 10, 12, and 15,000-square-foot lots are decreasing. The 8,000-square-foot lots are increasing from 97 to 143, so a total of 56 more 8,000-square-foot lots. So overall, the number of the smaller lots is increasing, and the number of the larger lots is decreasing. As I mentioned, this was due to environmental concerns that were, that were discovered on the property, but I'd like to reiterate that the applicant is not increasing the overall number of lots. The total lot yield will remain at 236 if this amendment is approved. One of the concerns that the Planning Commission had at its public hearing, which was held on November 4th, was that the 8,000-square-foot lots have a reduced setback of 25 feet, and increasing the number of 8,000-square-foot lots meant that there would be more homes with shorter driveways, which would mean less off-street parking available. So the Planning Commission deferred it at its November 4th meeting, and then the applicants worked on the plan and then came back at the Planning Commission's December 2nd meeting with a modified plan that showed that, where they were able to locate a large number of those homes, of those 8,000-square-foot lots, where they could provide 35-foot front setbacks, in other words, longer driveways to accommodate more off-street parking. So what we have is actually a net increase of 11 lots that have 35-foot setbacks over the, the plan that was adopted in 2013. So this plan actually has more off-street parking provided than the existing plan, based upon the work of the applicant and his design team to identify opportunities to provide off-street parking. Increasing the number of 8,000-square-foot lots appears to be consistent with the surrounding development. In comparison with adjacent subdivisions, the developing Indigo subdivision to the east is zoned RS8 with 8,000-square-foot lots. The Weston Park subdivision to the west is, consists of single-family development with minimum lot sizes of 6,000 to 12,000 square feet, and it also contains a zero lot line product called Weston Village. Southern Meadows to the northeast contains 10 and 12,000-square-foot minimum lots, and Kimbrough Woods to the north, which is also zoned PRD, has minimum lot sizes of 6,500 to 7,000 square feet. With that being said, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval once this came back on December 2nd. The city council will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight. Before it does so, however, Mr. Rob Mulchan with SEC has a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to go over the specifics of the project for the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
I was going through this earlier, but what, can you give me what the original numbers? I can't find it anywhere.
Sure, be glad to. The original plan showed 97 8,000-square-foot lots, and that has been increased to 143 8,000-square-foot lots. The 10,000-square-foot lots is, that number is...
36.
Yeah, it's going from 37 to 36. The 12,000-square-foot lots is decreasing from 55 to 37, and the 15,000-square-foot lots will decrease from 47 to 20.
Hey, Matthew, one other thing before they do, maybe they'll answer this in their presentation, but when I, when I read that it says development has commenced, section one, phase one, I can't read the end of this, has been recorded and homes are under construction, that just means, I mean, are there one, two, or three, or is it 10 or 12 in section one? Sorry, I can't tell from the way my...
Let me...
It looks to be about 15 from what I can see, but I can't be for sure. Do you know?
In section one, phase one, there are about, I think, 16 or 17 lots, and since this map was, let me pull this back up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't tell if I'm looking at the old or the new with the way it's structured in my computer here.
Since this map was, was drafted, they have recorded section one, phase two, which is this street where my cursor is going along, and that's probably about another 30 lots, and I believe that they have pulled permits on almost all of those lots. They're all sold, and they are, subdivision is really developing quickly, and in doing their due diligence for the remainder of the development tract is when they discovered the wetlands, and...
These look to be bigger lots just from the naked eye. Are the ones that are in section one are, look to be...
I believe they are the 10 and 15...
It'd be 12.
12 and 15, or... They're the 10 and 15 product.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I'll see what they've got.
Good day, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Rob Mulchan with SEC. I'm here tonight to present to you Sheffield Park, plan to amend the... I'm here tonight to present to you Sheffield Park, plan to amend the original PRD. As Matthew alluded to, the main reason we have come back to amend this PRD was in our due diligence phase for the remainder of the property, we came upon some wetland areas that we felt we need, one of which we can mitigate, the other one we felt was a little bit too large to mitigate, that we wanted to go ahead and preserve that space. And in doing so, we needed to readjust the overall plan itself in order to maintain getting the, the original yield of 236 lots. And in means of doing that, we shuffled some of the roadways around and also reduced the amount of lots, I mean, the size of the lots that were putting on the property in order to maintain getting the 236 yield that was originally approved with the PRD in 2013.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is it typical that you don't find things like wetlands until you, after you've bought the property and you're half, you know, a third of the way into development? It seems to me that you would have known that when you bought, when, when it was purchased at due diligence.
When Beazer bought the property, they bought it as, as is when it was originally taken down in 2006. I don't know the state of the due diligence that was done with the original purchasers of the land back in 2006. And Beazer, when they took that property over in 2012, 2013, they came back to do their homework after they got the amendment done to start looking at the adjacent, at risk of the property outside of the sections that were already under development. And that's when they came upon some areas they found were a little bit wetter than normal. They called out an environmentalist to come out and do an evaluation upon that. They conducted a report, found that there were a couple of wetland areas in the property that hadn't been noted before. Any, you know, any investigations at that point in time that they felt at this point in time, this is, you know, the best course of action was to go ahead and preserve that area and maintain it as a piece of open space within the overall development itself.
Are we showing an increase in the open space with this presentation?
Yes, yes.
And I think that's kind of in hand with what our 2035 plan is saying we're supposed to be trying to do is compromise adding green space for some increasing density.
Correct. And with this plan itself, we're not increasing the density from the original plan from 2013. We're just increasing the amount of open space, but in doing so, we're increasing the number of the smaller lots and increasing the open space to go along with that.
Right.
But let me, let me proceed forward with this. As Matthew alluded to, this property is, is along Veterans Parkway, just to the southwest of, at the end of St. Andrews Drive. It has pretty much been encapsulated by other PRDs, Weston to the left, to the west, Indigo to the east. And you've got, you have a couple of small pockets of remaining portions of county property around it as well. As we were talking about in regards to what is under construction at this point in time and what is built out, this portion here to the north of the cursor is a Section 1, Phase 1. The majority of those home sites have been constructed and are actually being lived upon at this point in time. Section 1, Phase 2 is this long cul-de-sac coming off the Section 1, Phase 1 up through here. Every single home site on those, this 30-some lots, has been bought and/or sold at this point in time. And probably about nine or 10 of those are actually under construction at this moment in time. The area in yellow to the south is Section 1, Phase 2, is Section 2, which was just recently approved a few months ago. That's roughly about 15 lots in that section there. Those plans are currently at the construction level and in, in the city being reviewed at this, at this point in time. But as you can see, the proposed plan on the left-hand side is the previously approved PRD from 2013. And the plan to the right is the current proposed plan. As you can see, the plan itself between the two, the property is pretty much bisected in half where the changes were taking place. To the north of the amenity center, which is here in the middle in this detention facility, for the most part, that design of the streets, of the street system is intact with the new plan. It's south of that, where the wetlands are, over here on the southeast corner of the property, is where we had to make the adjustment for being able to maintain that and include it into an open space portion of the, of the community. So in restructuring the roadway system, we also then came back and readjusted the lots. As you can see, this one section up here was, you know, pretty much the RS8-style homes over here. We've now expanded that more towards the west and also up here in the northwest corner to get ourselves that, get ourselves back to the 236 count that was originally approved, the original plan. There's a proposed phasing plan, as you can see, Section 1 there along Veterans Parkway, Section 2 just to the south of that. And participation of Section 3 will be hopefully coming in the next few months is just immediately to the west of Section 1, which will provide us with a second amendment of ingress egress back to Veterans Parkway for the community. Design standards for the community will stay as they were in the original PRD with one, one-and-a-half-story, two-story homes, homes ranging from 1,400 square foot up to 3,200 square feet. All the homes will be two-bedroom or more, and lots will range, as Matthew said, from 8,000 to 15,000 square-foot lots. Part of the contention that we had with Planning Commission was that most of the lots we were putting in here with the revision was going to a 25-foot setback. We went back to the design side of things and were able to adjust that and get more of the 8,000-square-foot lots that we were adding to this plan, adjusted to 35-foot front setbacks, which will allow us to have at least four car parking spaces on the driveway besides the garage spaces themselves. Again, staying, the vast majority of the homes will be brickstone cement board siding on front elevations. With those characteristics being able to be used on the sides as well, but the heavy gauge vinyl siding is the anticipated main use on the sides and rear. The homes that are adjacent to or immediately along Veterans Parkway will have all elevations consistently made of brickstone or hardy board or cement board siding on that side. You can see this is an example of one of the homes that's currently already built within the community itself. Another example of the architectural and elevational style. All homes will have two-car garages, will be front and/or side loaded garages. All streets will be public right-of-ways, side of front yards, sidewalks both sides of the streets, and all utilities will remain underground. Here's another example of another one of the homes currently built in Sheffield Park. Amenities, staying in tune with the original plan, the amenity complex dead at the heart of the city, center of the, of the neighborhood is under, is under design development currently and will possibly be coming in the next month or so to the city for review. This will be the heart of the amenity structure. Will be a pool cabana with, and a, with a swimming pool. And one of the newest features we've incorporated to add an extra pedestrian connectivity throughout the community is a walking trail from the south back up to the north alongside our detention retention pond that is the heart and soul behind the amenity complex. Ingress egress are access to the property. The main entrance is already up. As you can see, the folly that was designed is up and running at the entrance there from the display standpoint with the Sheffield Park signage. Our secondary main access point will be coming with Section 3 in the next few months. And then we also have three other locations around the edges of the property for adjacent connectivity to Indigo, which is currently under construction on the east. Weston Park, if it ever continues further south on our western boundary, and a stub to the south for the adjacent properties to the south. And we'll be consistently staying with our, the current city standards in regards to public roadway design. With that, I'll leave it open. Any questions for you? Thank you.
So were there any changes at all other than the layout and the size mix?
That was the only change that we've had, you know, exactly, you know, other than the size of the lots, the, we increased the, you know, the smaller quantities. And then the roadway structure were the only two things that really changed. And then, of course, with the addition of the wetlands, we added extra open space to this plan versus the last time.
I've just got a couple of quick comments. Well, one question, on a typical 8,000-square-foot lot, because it's, we've increased that, you know, 40-some-odd percent. The homes that we're talking about on there, especially increasing them to a 35-foot setback, how deep are the lots?
Those are about 135 to 140 on those. So you're talking about 100-foot envelope pass where the front of the building would be. So you're talking with a rear setback of 20 foot, you've got an envelope about 80 foot for that, you know, for that lot.
How deep will the majority of the homes be? How deep will the majority of the homes be?
They're roughly about 70 foot in depth. So you've, you've got about tolerance of about 10 foot between the rear setback and the back elevation of the house on that. So you're talking roughly between a, on the backyard side of the, if you're thinking about what you're asking, is how big are the backyards in these? You're talking a minimum 20 foot, but more or less towards the 30-foot setback space in the backyard.
I think my concern, you know, typically on PRDs, when the, I don't think it's relevant to, to look at what the original number was because that's based upon density and given amenities. So here, I feel like that, you know, I think the city is, is good at being a team player. But here, we have, in my opinion, we're trying to mitigate an issue that's been found during the development. So the mitigation has been, hey, we've got open space now that's wetland property, so we're now going to call that open space. And we're going to increase our lot yield to be able to keep us at that amount. So, and we've seen this with plans that come back. Where I'm concerned is if we make this change, then what keeps the developer from coming back a couple of years from now saying, "Hey, we found another issue, we're going to, we, we need to decrease even more." A good example is the project that was out on Elum Road that we stipulated and said, "This is how many front entry garages that we will allow them in the development." And the developer said, "This is what we'll do." They get to the end of the project and all of a sudden, they can't meet that requirement. So they're all front entry garages. So, you know, I'm not saying I couldn't be for this, but there seems like that there needs to be something that the developer puts back in here to mitigate this, whether that be, if you're only going to have 20-foot backyards, so that means that your adjacent property owners are going to be 40 feet from one another from backyards. There needs to be increase in vinyl, in hardy board on the homes instead of vinyl siding. Or there needs to be, there needs to be some, I would even look at saying, once this is, if this is approved, this project cannot come back through for a variance on a PRD. So, and, and I don't even know if we can do that, if that's, you know, it's the right of the person to bring a PRD through, but to me, it seems like we're, the city's giving a lot to be able to mitigate an issue.
Yeah, one of the, one of the notes that I wrote, and I don't, you know, I'm obviously not an engineer and don't know this, but one of the notes that I wrote was that I was surprised that we, that, that we only got an additional 11 lots with the, you know, with the setback that I guess we were trying to look for out of 256, or is that right? 256 lots, we only increased that number by 11 by the way we moved this around. It seems to me that if we were trying to get that bigger setback or, you know, have the better parking situation in here that, you know, you might, could have gone from, from 256 to 246 and still had a pretty good number of lots coming into the development that, you know, everybody can be happy and be prosperous. Yet, you know, put this thing in a position by, you know, where we, we get more than 11 lots of a benefit. You know, I, I had, you know, I had some, you know, some concerns with it. I wrote four or five notes. You know, and I guess we're, we have to have a public hearing about this, but I'll, I'll go ahead and get one out on the table. I mean, it didn't look like anybody came and spoke at the, the Planning Commission meeting, which, you know, always signifies that maybe it's not that big of a deal. But on principle, whether anybody shows up or not, you know, PRDs are supposed to be planned and supposed to be to give, you know, the neighbors, the neighbors who already live there some indication of what they should expect in their backyard. You have a section that's completed. It happens to be the bigger, looks like to me, kind of the bigger houses. And it may not even impact it because they're back behind it for, to a large degree, but, you know, it just kind of... I definitely had some concerns when I looked at it. I'll just put it to you that way. And, and one of the questions that I wrote was there, was, I mean, obviously, I'm sure there were signs put out. Was there any kind of neighborhood meeting or anything with the folks that already live there? I think that's kind of typical of what we've seen recently.
Yeah, Matt Taylor of SEC, I don't think we had a neighborhood meeting per se with this one because of the limited number of people that were living there when we started this process. But I have talked to five or six residents that live inside of Sheffield Park. They got the notices or saw the signs and explained to them exactly the reason for the requested change. And I'm not sure if any of them are here tonight, but I explained to them. And the ones that I talked to didn't seem to have any concern with the adjustment in the lot size. And one thing to note, Mayor McFarland, with the lot depths, I don't think there's a variation in the lot depth between the 8,000 and the 12,000. I think it's that they get wider. Matter of fact, I think the 8,000s may be a little bit deeper in general than the 12 or 10,000 square-foot lots.
One, one last thing. I did hear a question about the wetlands. Those can, I, I believe that those reviews and assessments are only good for, I think it's a three-year term. And so as the project develops, if you get a different reviewer at the state, sometimes they will want to come back and look at those items again. And so that could have been some of the reason why the wetlands came up after the fact.
Mr. Taylor, what if a wetland, if someone else reviews it three years from now, could this be a PRD coming back from the developer asking to get more yield on the lots?
It could, or it could go the other way. I mean, we could get somebody else that looks at a wetland and maybe they decide that it's not as much of a wetland. Now, I think the three-year term, is that right, Senator? It's roughly a three-year term. And now, usually, they will, they will go with that. But obviously, we had multiple plans by, I will say, multiple designers and multiple engineers that did not identify this before. And at some point along the line, they found a reviewer that, "Hey, this looks wet. We need to go look at this."
Okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaga. We'll conduct a public hearing to consider amending approximately 91.5 acres in the planned residential development, PRD district located along Veterans Parkway Sheffield Park PRD Beazer Homes applicant 2015-426. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ 68 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 91.5 acres in the planned residential development district located along Veterans Parkway Sheffield Park PRD Beazer Homes applicant 2015-426. Mr. Llannan?
I didn't look for any shaking heads or nodding heads, but as, as it relates to, can we, is there any kind of stipulation relative to saying, "Hey, look, this needs to be kind of the last one"? The reason that I ask is a little bit different, but it's along the same lines. I mean, you know, Mr. Taylor mentioned that, you know, the next reviewer might come in and say, "There might be more, but there might be less." Which means the next reviewer may come in and say, "That's all dry and you can build some more houses on it." Which means all this was kind of for naught. And then, you know, could, would we go in and, you know, at that point, be looking for another, you know, another addition?
Yeah, come on up if you want. Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm Toby Tobias. I'm with Beazer Homes. We're very happy with the 236 number, which is, was, was our target goal in the first place. So 236 is the number that, that we were able to still come up with and still supply you or supply our buyers with another open space. So we have no intention of coming back and asking for a revision. You know, we're, we're quite happy with the way the development looks as of the moment. And, you know, we, we do have no plans to come back to ask for any more revisions.
I guess I would say I'm approving this with the, or going to vote in favor of this with the understanding that if this wetlands is wetlands, then you can't do anything with it anyways.
Correct.
If it doesn't turn out to be wetlands and it does drain, then, or the water mitigates itself somehow. If, if that does take place, then we've increased the amount of backyard space almost for the kids in the neighborhood. And so as long as there's no intentions of coming back and increasing the, the number of lots, and I, and I think that's kind of the, the way that I'm approving it. I'm approving it as you're presenting it.
That is correct.
If you were to come back and say, "I want more lots," my answer is going to be, "No, I guess I'm just preparing you for that."
I do understand that.
Because, I mean, if, if there's green space there, or if it's wetlands there, it is open space that is being added to that neighborhood, and I think that's...
Well, that's, that's what we worked for with SEC is, you know, we knew we were decreasing the lots, but we were also wanting, because of the wet space, the, the wet area, to provide some sort of open space to make up for that.
I've got a quick, just a quick question.
Sure.
On the 12,000 and 15,000 square-foot lots, where you're losing 45 of those, what would have been the percentage? have been the percentage of brick and hardy on those, those homes?
You know, I can't, I can't answer that. I, I don't have those numbers.
So, say the houses, homes that you've already built in the first section, what would, what's the percentage of brick and hardy on those homes?
You know, it also depends on, you know, bordering towards Veterans Parkway. You know, so we have, I'm going to say it's 75, 75%.
Brick and hardy?
Brick and hardy board.
Okay. So then, that, where we're, we're losing 45 of the larger lots and picking up 46 of the smaller lots, what would be the percentage on those houses?
Again, you know, I'm, I'm the land development manager, and, and I apologize for not having those figures with me.
In regards to the materials of the homes, the materials of the homes are not changing, the quantity of the homes, and what's going on, the front elevations are the ones that have the strongest quantities of materials. And those are only required, those are only allowed to have brick, stone, or hardy board on those sides. Sides and rears, they're allowed to, based on whichever builder's coming on to buy those homes and what the buyer wants, to, those elevations of the sides and rears can have hardy, brick, or stone, but, you know, the basis is going to be the heavy gauge vinyl on those. This, this number isn't changing in regards to the elevations between the last PRD and this PRD. So Beazer's staying in tune with what the previous.
There's no percentages in the original PRD?
No, there's no percentage of that.
Mayor, Mayor, I would like to say, I really don't think it would be appropriate to tell someone they can't come back. I think it's kind of a fundamental right to petition for redress of grievances, but, and we don't know what might happen tomorrow. We're not likely to have a catastrophic event of geology out there, but we don't know. But I think you conveyed a fairly strong message that they're not likely to get a receptive audience if they do come back again, and I, I think they've understood that. So I, but I, just to say you can't come back, I don't think would be appropriate.
Well, I think the, the premise is that, you know, we had a lot of PRDs that were approved in the 04, 05, 06 range, really 03, 04, 05, 06. And then when the market went down, everything sort of stopped, and so 07, 08, 09 was not good. So all of a sudden, really, 10, 11, 12, we had PRD after PRD after PRD that came back, and we worked really hard to help those individuals. My main concern is now I think it's time, in my opinion, that we send a message to say, we understand the market's improved, but we can't continually come back and change these PRDs when we've said to the neighbors, this is what you're getting, you're getting in those areas. So I don't know how we do that, but besides just saying.
I think you're conveying that message tonight.
Well, that's just, I'm just one person, so.
Well, there seems to be some consensus.
We don't need to have, we don't need to have as a, as a city, hey, we'll get this PRD, a developer to come in and have the opinion, we'll get this PRD approved, we'll start a section, and then a year from now, don't worry, we'll bring it back through and we'll get something changed.
Right. I agree completely.
And I think that was the point in my message, was that there is a limit to when you say, this is enough of adjusting this PRD, you should have got it right the first time. But having said that, I'll move for approval.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Pursuant to Resolution 15 RPH 70 adopted by the City Council on December 10th, 2015, conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to approximately 22.5 acres in the Planned Residential Development PRD district located east of Casey Lane Three Rivers PRD. As indicated on the attached map, Green Trails LLC applicant 2015-430, notice of said public hearing was published in the December 21st, 2015 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Ballack?
Thank you, Mayor McFarlane. In a lot of the last public hearing, we thought we'd bring another PRD amendment to.
Thank you.
Kind of grumpy tonight, aren't we? Our next, our final public hearing tonight is a PRD amendment for 22.51 acres located in the Three Rivers PRD. It's a portion of the Three Rivers PRD that is identified as the Gardens of Three Rivers. You recall that back in 2003, the original Three Rivers PRD was approved with a number of different components to it, the crossings at Three Rivers, the gardens at Three Rivers, and so on and so forth. Just to get you oriented a little bit, the Three Rivers subdivision runs the length from New Salem Highway all the way down to Veterans Parkway, and you'll see that it is just to the east of St. Andrews Drive, and Three Rivers encompasses Casey Lane for several miles, actually. The portion of the PRD in question, the Gardens, was a 33-acre element of the PRD, which called for a development of 194 single-family detached lots. The 22.51 acres in question is approved for 142 single-family detached lots. The proposed lots were to have dimensions of 45 by 130 and a minimum lot size of 4,550 square feet. You'll notice on the map in front of you, the subject property is colored in orange, and the lots directly to the west, fronting on Casey Lane, those are part of the Gardens at Three Rivers, but they are not included in this PRD amendment. Most of those homes have already been built, and the subject development called the Gardens at Three Rivers, the proposed PRD amendment, is only in the portion of the property that is colored orange. The development, as I mentioned, is approved for single-family detached homes. Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC will be coming up here in just a moment to give a PowerPoint presentation on the proposed amendment, which they are looking to actually decrease the density in this 22.51 acres, but they are proposing a different housing type, actually two different housing types than the single-family detached product, which was originally proposed back in 2003. There are 73 cottage units, which will be a minimum of 1,300 square feet, and those will be one type of housing product and a villa housing product, which will, which will consist of 54 units with a minimum of 1,400 square feet. Now, I mentioned there was discussion at the planning commission level at the last public hearing with regards to off-street parking. The applicant has addressed off-street parking in this PRD amendment by, even though there are reduced setbacks, there will be a condition upon the zoning if it's approved, as well as a restriction placed that garages can only be used for vehicular parking, and this would be enforced not only by the planning department as a part of the, as a part of the PRD, but also by the homeowners association, as it would be a restriction on the property. In addition, there will be 60 guest parking spaces to mitigate the shorter driveways. Also, this will be an age-targeted product, will be age-restricted, but it will, it will be age-targeted, 55 and up targeted, so that the number of vehicles per household would be expected to be lower than a typical single-family detached home. With that being said, as I mentioned, Mr. Taylor has a presentation on this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Good evening, Mayor McFarlane, members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC here in town, and I do have a brief presentation over our proposed amendment here at the Gardens at Three Rivers. As Mr. Blomley said, this was originally approved as part of the original Three Rivers PRD back in 2003. This is one of the last planned developments that has needed to kind of be revamped to address the new market after the downturn. And so as you've driven out there, you'll see a lot of activity inside of Three Rivers. There is, I think it was one of the more active subdivisions inside of Murfreesboro in 2015. This section was approved as an alley-loaded product. It was all single-family detached. There's about 142 homes on this 22 and a half acres, which comes out to a density of about 6.3 units to the acre. They're all 35-foot wide lots. The homes in here were a minimum of 1,400 square feet in size, did not have any specific amenities to this location. Of course, it was allowed to use the amenities of the rest of Three Rivers, and it was going to be part of the larger HOA, as well as have underground utilities. Currently, the homes along Casey Lane, I think all of those are built out now. We do have two street stubs into this location. Our western boundary is bounded by private alley on the back of those existing homes, and then the rest of the property is surrounded by a single-family detached zoning, some RS zonings around our, to the north, south, and I think we have a PRD to the south as well. We also have site that generally drains from west to east. Here you'll see the multitude of developments around. You've got River Downs to the east, Rivers Edge to the south, Three Rivers proper to the west, then you've got the age-restricted product of Stone Bridge at Three Rivers, kind of to the north and west of this location. These are examples, some of the homes that are constructed along Casey Lane directly in front of this property. The property itself. Our proposed plan reduces from 142 homes down to 127 homes on the 22 and a half acres. That brings the density down to 5.6 units to the acre. We are proposing what we're calling 73 cottages, which are shown in the brownish color here on the screen, and 54 villas, which are shown in blue. This will still be part of the larger HOA, but it will also have a sub-association to maintain its exteriors, its amenities, and its landscaping for this specific portion. These are a attached product. It's made up of two, three, and four unit buildings. Each one of the lots will be on a lot of record itself, though, there's all be public streets, and we have planned for visitor parking spread throughout. And we have eliminated all the alleys here, except for the existing alley, which we're trying to utilize and address appropriately with our driveways. We anticipate for the development to be built in about four phases with a mixture of the villas and the cottages in each phase. Cottages themselves, you should be familiar with, from the Valleybrook project that just went through a few months ago on Compton Road. They're a one-story home, they're age-targeted, a minimum of 1,300 square feet in size, landscaping throughout, garages, and then we'll have, we'll keep the same level of materials that the rest of Three Rivers has, which is a brick, stone, cement board siding. The only vinyl allowed in Three Rivers, as well as this development, will be in the trim areas. Here you can see the garage side of the building. You've got a muted front garage door. It's an architectural door, very inviting. And then the other side is a pretty nice aesthetic, one-story building. The villas, shown in the blue, I would akin those to something, what we're accustomed to here locally, some of the decorating, both the attached zero-lot line type units. They're one and two-story homes, they're a minimum of 1,400 square feet in size. Again, you'll have heavy landscaping with these, decorative garage doors, and the same quality of materials, as I mentioned previously. Here's an example elevation of what these, these will look like from the street. As you can see, a lot of building planes, a lot of roofline variations, good quality Another example. Amenities, we are planning some of our own amenities here with a clubhouse central to the neighborhood, along with its own parking, western community gardens that are associated with those. Patio will accompany that clubhouse. The community garden is something that my client has found very popular with this age demographic, really gets people together, it's a low, it's not very stressful and joints, like a pool or other physical activities, but it does create a sense of community, helps them get out of the house, gives them a focus during the day. Access, we don't plan any new connection points to Casey Lane. We're going to utilize those two existing street stubs, but we're also planning a lot of interconnectivity to our neighbors. We've got two access points planned toward the north, and there's a sizable tract of property there that is undeveloped, and then we are planning two connection points to the east, which was the Rivers Down subdivision, which is not developed, back to our point to date. As I mentioned earlier, there will all be public streets, built to city standards, sidewalks on both sides, heavily landscaped throughout. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
All right, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Three Rivers PRD to rezone approximately 22.5 acres located on east Casey Lane Green Trails LLC applicant 2015-430. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Susan Erickson, and we reside at 2023 Ivy Glen Drive. It's in Summer Place, and we own 2.8 acres at the very end of the cul-de-sac, so the proposal backs up and is adjacent to our property. Our neighbor owns 12.8 acres. Just a little, I'll try to make this quick, a little history. We moved in the home in 1996, and Claire Vander Chef was developing the property to the south side of us, which ultimately he sold, and that is being built out. And I've been here before many times, as the zoning has changed from RS 15 and RS 12s to smaller RS 8s and so forth. Well, Barfield is a nightmare. I'm retired, three years, but my daughter works at the VA. It takes her three lights to get out from Barfield onto, onto 99 New Salem. So my concern about the property coming in behind us is that I heard you mentioned that there's going to be different entryways in. Now, if that goes to Barfield, that is again going to increase the traffic on Barfield. Likewise, New Salem, I mean, I've been to several council meetings, I have, Barfield can't be resolved because the city owns some, Rutherford owns some, we live in Rutherford. But on the same token, 99 is horrendous, it's two lanes, and yet we're still developing and developing, resulting in greater and greater traffic now with the new Walmart out there and so forth. So I just wanted to share my concerns regarding that. And the last thing, I had a question, I don't mean to sound naive, but 42 proposed homes versus 73 cottages and 54 villas, is that a villa considered one big building, or is it considered one, two? In other words, I saw a picture of the villa, it had two homes. One of the cottages had four homes. So is that four divided by 73, is that accounting for, do you see what I'm saying? I'm sorry. Okay, you understand? Okay. All right, well, thank you for your time.
We'll get, we'll get your questions answered.
Ms. Erickson, what was your address again? I'm sorry, your address?
2023 Ivy Glen Drive.
Ivy Glen, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Good evening to the council. My name is Brooke Scott. Address is 2451 Casey Lane. I am against this proposal as such. When I originally bought my house in 2008, it was planned as a, excuse me, detached properties. As a mother of a seven-year-old, and with this proposal being targeted toward the older community, I feel that this is changing on me, and this may not be necessarily a good neighborhood to, to continue to live in. So I'm not, I understand that. So I'm not, I understand that the downward turn in the market around 2008, 2009 called for a stop in the development of the community. But to kind of change the environment and the culture of the neighborhood just puts an additional strain as a family. So I would consider maybe coming up with different options for this community and for this land that is available other than this proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 150Z70 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 22.5 acres in the planned residential development district located east of Casey Lane, Three Rivers PRD, as indicated on the attached map, Green Trails LLC applicant. Mr. Taylor, would you mind addressing Ms. Erickson's question about product?
Yes, sir. Whenever we, the number that we're saying are dwelling units. So it's not buildings. It's, you know, if I said 73 cottages, that may be spread across 15 buildings, if I'm doing some math right, probably not. But so that is actually dwelling units. So we're comparing apples to apples as far as our decrease in density from the original PRD to what we're talking about now.
Matt, I got a question for you, too. And you might, you know, address some of the other thoughts. But there's a, there's a line in here in the, in the notes that says each dwelling unit will be located on its own lot of record and will be sold fee simple.
Yes, sir.
We've had a situation where we were told the same thing, and basically, you know, as soon as they got built, I rode by there, and there's a big "for rent, for lease" sign up out front. And the developer said, ah, yeah, I said it, but there's really, I didn't mean it. I was just kidding.
The, the fee simple really means that they are selling land along with it because of the road, instead of doing like a horizontal property regime like we see in some of the townhomes. I will tell you that my client, the builder here, is intending to be good old homes, the same, same builder that was going to build in Valley Brook. They build and sell. Now, what the people do, that they sell to, they can't, they can't control. But they build and sell. They are not a rental home people. I will tell you that.
You understand my concern, though? And, you know, the reason that we have to have these concerns up here, where we're worried about PRDs coming back and change, the lady who came up and spoke, this is, I mean, it couldn't be a better case in point for what we're concerned with on the last one and on this one, too. And, you know, when, when somebody tells me they're going to sell something fee simple, and it's going to be for sale, and we're not going to rent it, and then the moment it goes up over there on Old Last Castas Highway, they put for lease signs up, that's the last time I listen to it, the very last. And so, you know, I, I have a concern with this from a standpoint of just saying, well, this might end up being condos or whatever it might end up being. You know, I mean, I think she has a pretty good point. You know, she bought her house based on, that's what the plan said, and...
I will say that her house couldn't be built on those lots anymore. Whenever her house was built, that PRD was approved with a three-foot side setback. After that was constructed, the fire department, along with some fire codes, changed and said you either had to be attached, or you had to be, have to have a five-foot setback. So the lots that were planned here, you couldn't build the house that she's built anymore. And the...
You could spread it to a five-foot setback and still build detached, though, right?
What's that? Sorry.
You could build detached and just make a five-foot setback instead of three.
That's what the, yes. But you couldn't build her particular house for that development.
It could still be detached, which is what she was expecting, right?
But I will, I will say, the detached could easily be turned around and rented out as anything that we're talking about here. There's still no, nothing that we can put in place that could prevent that rental. And this right here is a, we've eliminated the alleys, which I think have been problems on, particularly inside of Three Rivers. They've been a problem for the city. And so we're trying to get away from, from that alley product in this, with this project. And it is a age-targeted, all the ladies talked about traffic. It is age-targeted. And with that, you're going to have less cars per day, less trips per day. And so that should help alleviate, in addition to us decreasing the density with this project. And those extra connection points should only help mitigate traffic problems at, at signals and at connection points, major arteries.
Mr. Taylor, are the connection points to, I guess that's to the, to the east that would ultimately go toward Barfield Road?
Yes, sir. In some fashion, they would connect back over there, is the idea.
Someday, but there's no development occurring now that this would connect to, is there?
No.
Is your client looking to build a road all the way to Barfield Road?
No.
Didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're strictly stopping.
Right. That connection will be in the future.
Yes. Be driven by whoever finishes out Rivers Downs.
Matt, is this, this is very similar to the project that was approved on Compton Road?
The cottages are, the villas is a new product, if you will, but it's still targeted, same builder, still targeted toward that 55-plus age range. As a matter of fact, the cottages are identical, except for on Compton, we were allowing, I think, 15% vinyl. Here, we have absolutely no vinyl, except trim.
I know when this was first proposed for the Compton Road area, several members of the planning commission went over to Hendersonville to look at, to look at this product, this same product, on their own. And we were fairly impressed with it. It looked like it was well done. So we did a little reconnaissance on our own to see what this looked like, because it was a new product for our area. And it is designed for senior residents.
Yes, sir. And I will say that the, the, I don't know, the age-targeted that we're talking about here is not abnormal or new to Three Rivers. Stone Bridge at Three Rivers is actually an age-restricted community. And it's, I mean, I could throw a baseball from this property onto, onto that side. It's, it's on the west side of Casey Lane versus the east side.
That's pretty good on.
I was going to say, it's good. That's where we're all moving to.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Do you have this ordinance in front of you?
Mayor, I, I've seen this product in, in a different city, and I was impressed with it. It's well done and well put together. And I think it'll be an asset, so I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Okay, we'll hear from the C-School's Finance Administrative Services Director about the proposed 2015-2016 budget amendments.
I'm going to handle this for Mr. Anderson tonight. This is, as we've been doing throughout the year, this is their first amendment to their budget for fiscal year '16. They were notified of some additional revenues that they did not have originally budgeted. They had some needs to move some expenditures around, so they took advantage to do both in this budget amendment. I recommend that you approve this, and there may be more come before the end of the year, but this is their first.
All right. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 16R-01, amendment to 2015-2016 budgets for the Murfreesboro City Schools. First amendment.
Move approval, second.
Motion to second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Consider for recommendation, consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director amendment to contract with MTSU and MTSU Foundation for usage of the Adams Tennis Complex. Ms. Gillis?
Good evening, Mayor, Murfreesboro City Council. I do have one item for your consideration. That's an amendment between the city of Murfreesboro, on a contract between the city of Murfreesboro, Middle Tennessee State University, and Middle Tennessee State University Foundation for the usage of the Adams Tennis Center. Of course, we entered in this agreement in July 10 of 2014. It did specify the times, dates, and number of courts that we would use at the Adams Tennis Center for MTSU practice. We've got six months under our belt. The tennis team has been out there. They've practiced, and they've looked at the hours. And what was put in the contract was originally requested by Middle Tennessee State University. But the coaches approached us after the fall practice and asked us to consider an amendment, which we have done, and we have before you. That amendment, what it does, it deletes Clause 3, 1A, and instead it substitutes in the following, where we had said that they would have priority for six courts, it now says eight, between the same times, 1 and 4, and the same days, Monday through Friday. But instead of starting October the 1st, it starts at the first day of the academic year and goes through December 20th. And then between January 5th, and where we had stopped, March 31st, it continues on through the completion of the conference tournament. Also, there was three additions added to A. The first one was for an option for MTSU tennis teams to use four courts in the mornings prior to the 9:00 hour, and they did that this fall. The women actually practiced in the morning, men practiced in the afternoon. We found that to be a distinct advantage for the city, because that opened up four courts for us. And so what we have done, and I know in the tennis committee, this was talked about at length, but we've also given them the option in 1 for them to do that in the spring as well, if they see an opportunity. And so that is what is incorporated into A1. In A2, in the event that both of the MTSU tennis teams and the individual player advance to the NCAA postseason, MTSU shall have the right for four courts indoors for either program in case of inclement weather. And the coaches will tell you that they want to play outside. But if they're advancing, they want the opportunity to be able to come in and practice or give their individual players the opportunity to play. And then A3, that was added, they've asked for 10 additional hours. Those would be based on court availability. Because they, quite frankly, have some students, they, they pointed to one engineering student that they have that has a lab on Monday. He's a 4.0 student. We were pretty impressed he was a 4.0 student. And we talked about that a little bit. But anyway, that would give them the opportunity to schedule additional times for those particular players. And we feel that's appropriate. So, and like I said, we, we took this to the tennis committee, special call meeting on Monday. It was approved unanimously by the tennis committee. Yesterday, at the regular meeting, the Parks and Recreation Commission, it was presented and it was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So it is a recommendation of the city and the MTSU staff that the amendment be approved, and the mayor be authorized to sign the necessary documents pending review and approval of the legal staff. And this amendment was produced by our legal staff. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have relative to this.
What are the hours of the tennis facility? How late is it open?
We stay open until 10:00. Generally speaking, Mr. Shacklet, reserve court time starts around 9:00. That's when we said before 9:00. The MTSU team played from 7:00 to 9:00, the ladies did. And generally, in the afternoons, it starts getting busier again around 4:30, 5:00, starting reserve court times again. But that's kind of the busy time. The 1 to 4 time is really kind of the downtime. And that's, that's why we picked that. MTSU has asked their students to try to schedule around that particular time. So it works both, well for both of us.
Yeah, we, go ahead, I'll give you a little synopsis.
Do they usually use all of that time consistently? Or is, if, when we say priority, that means if, if it's vacant, then somebody else could book that time if they don't need it, if MTSU's not using it?
You're exactly right. And the MTSU coaches have been really great to work with, MTSU. And what they do is they put a schedule together for us. The schedule that they gave us for the spring season shows that they're going to be there 17 days.
Okay.
And, and they show the times that either the women's teams are traveling, or the men's teams are traveling, or they're both traveling.
That's what I was thinking.
And that way, we can go ahead and sell those court times. So we work very well together at that.
Yeah, we had a, basically a two-hour-long conversation, trying to kind of hash some of this out, day before yesterday, and people were throwing stuff and fighting and spitting and all kinds of stuff.
I'm sure anybody biting. Throwing tennis balls at each other.
We definitely were trying, I mean, the, the crux of the, the discussion was trying to make sure, how do we limit the amount of time that all, the entire facility is taking up, even though it is not in a prime time, you know, timeframe? That we wanted to try to make sure that, hey, look, if we can have an open court or two, we, we obviously would want to. And in the fall, the problem sort of takes care of itself. And in the spring, what we did was added a, added a sentence in here that gives them the option to, to stagger those times like they do in the fall. There's not likely they can do it in the spring because of day tournaments and matches that they have. But even if they do a, you know, if one of them goes from 1 to 4, and one of them goes from 2 to 5, you have four courts on the, on each end, and you're only covered up for two hours. I mean, so they, they're going to try to work with that the best they can. But in worst-case scenario, it's like 17 days during the whole spring that all eight courts are taken, and it's from 1 to 4, so it's before school lets out, and certainly the, the slow time. So we, we went ahead and did it. And, you know, one of the things I'll, I'll mention to you guys, just in fairness, the thing that, that kind of, I think, took everybody aback in our meeting was it's a, it's a 20-year contract, you know?
With two 20-year extensions, so it's actually a 60-year.
Could be, you know, but you have the option. And, and with, I think we figured out with council action, it can be changed, but it takes some pretty significant council action to, to change it, you know what I mean? But, yeah, it was a, you know, everybody kind of went, oh, wait a minute. And, and that went from probably a 10-minute conversation to a two-hour conversation once I think that was plugged in. But we, you know, I, ultimately, I'll tell you from what it's worth, I certainly did some of the spitting and throwing, and ultimately came to the conclusion that it would be the right thing to do. And one of the main things, kind of, understand about this, too, from a tennis perspective, is Coach Jimmy, the, the men's coach, you know, he'll carry 10 players. And so on three courts, you basically only have one court of singles for your practices every day. Because you'd have to have two courts of doubles and one court of singles to get all 10 of those players on three courts. So going to that extra fourth court, I mean, it really opens up how you're, how you're practicing your team. And singles is the typical practice. That's how you want to practice your, your tennis team. So it's pretty important, is what I'm trying to get at. And ultimately, I felt like it was okay. So that, that was how I came to the conclusion.
Is there a process for annual, I mean, how does that work? I know, I know the group that you're on, commission, or is there an annual review or an annual process that, how's this working out for everybody? Is everybody still comfortable? Or do we just say, this is the document and...
It's monthly right now.
Okay.
And it's been pretty, lots of work.
Is that the form of the motion?
Is everybody, I mean, yeah. I'll move, we approve it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillen. Thank you for waiting so long. Consider for recommendations, the city manager proposed acquisition of 1 East College Street from Franklin Synergy Bank. Mr. Lance.
This, Mayor, members of council, I've got a short PowerPoint to share with you, just a few slides. But I think this is an exciting opportunity where the city could purchase Franklin Synergy Building at 1 East College Street for $1.55 million. The city's got a parking lot adjacent to it, so I think this piece of property means more to the city than anyone else. So if you give me a second, I've got to go down front to queue that up. We've got a photograph here of, you know, historically, what has been known in Murfreesboro is the first United Methodist Church. You can see the bell tower prominently there at the corner. This was acquired by Mid-South Bank in 2003. There's three main components to the property. The first is the former sanctuary, this is currently unused. The second component are the former classrooms, this is being used right now by Franklin Synergy as their office buildings. And then there was a realty office at 123 East College Street, and that's currently being used by the mortgage division. The bank sites just under 2 acres, 1.87 acres, and the city parking lot is a little more than a half an acre. Here's an area of the property, you can see here on the, well, the cursor won't work, the left-hand side, starting at the bottom left-hand corner is the sanctuary, moving north would be the office buildings. The church has been using the gymnasium as their main area for tellers, some of their office space. And in the bottom right-hand corner is the realty building, which is housing their mortgage division. There's a 60-some space parking lot that's been owned by the city for some period of time in the upper right-hand corner. So I'm going to very quickly go over maybe five advantages, as I see it, to the acquisition of this property. I'll go over these one by one. One of the things that we've heard in terms of the development of this piece of property, as Franklin Synergy put it on the market, was in order to really maximize this block's potential, would be the need to see the city's parking lot be developed along with it. So with the city ownership of the bank property, it then removes that uncertainty and would have a developer be able to look at an entire block for a development purpose. Taking out that uncertainty also speeds up the process. The second reason is city input on future development. Now, the private sector's going to identify projects that would be moved forward on this piece of property. But with the city's ownership, we'd be in a position to assess the economic impact that would be occurring there. Much like the Gateway property now, we've had some projects that have approached the city about the Gateway. We thought, well, it may not be a good fit for the Gateway property, but there may be an adjacent area of the city that that may be better used. The city could also place appropriate requirements on the project, such as a schedule, architecture, performance, and even job creation. This property is zoned office, general, residential. We also may look at a planned development approach, so we'd have additional certainty on that. I think one of the other main reasons for taking a look at this at this point in time is continuing with the energy on Lidle Street. We've got a new front door in our community with the new roundabout coming off Broad Street. With that new roundabout and that new front door, the city will be approving Lidle Street. Rutherford County's building a new 360-space parking garage, and there is a new $73 million judicial center. This is the block next to the judicial center, so we're seeing that energy continue as we move down Lidle Street. We believe that the best chance of preserving portion, some or all of this property is with the city ownership. The church was constructed in the late 1800s, I think Mr. Jakes spoke to you at open mic and talked a little bit about the history. Now, the church property itself is not listed on the National Register, nor is it located in the city's historic zoning districts. So that means there's no programs, codes, ordinances that would prevent anything in this building from being demolished. Someone could come in and get a demolition permit right now, and there really would not be a historic way to prevent that from happening. But with the city's ownership and realizing how important it is to our downtown, this gives us, we believe, the best opportunity to see some elements of that, maybe it's the bell tower. Mr. Whittaker had indicated that we'd had an engineer to take a look at that, and the bell tower is clearly capable of being saved. And the Murfreesboro 2035 has spent a good amount of time talking about downtown development. It's the history of our community and communities that have been successful in economic development are really seeing a resurgence in their downtown. In the Murfreesboro 2035 plan, it calls out uses that would be forecasted for our downtown that would include mixed uses, residential uses above commercial, live-work units, office and entertainment areas. All of these have tremendous potential for the Franklin Synergy block. Quickly on the deal points, the sale price is $1.55 million. Franklin Synergy had this appraised in 2015 for $1.69 million. It is on the tax rolls for $2.2 million. Franklin Synergy is, currently has plans to construct a new bank facility in the Gateway. That's going to take them a good part of the year 2016, and they would actually rent the building back from the city at about $9,100 per month, and the city would fund the sale price with fund balance. In terms of where we would go from here, if the city were to acquire this, the city and the chamber would be very active in marketing the property. The city also has the opportunity to include various incentives, taxing, increment financing to include this property and potentially surrounding areas. Again, that is where we can be creative in incenting development that could both lower the cost of development to a subsequent buyer and have the city realize tax gains in the long run. We could also look for job creation goals and enhancing the surrounding downtown, again, that energy that's happening currently on Lidle Street, that the city would look to appoint a task force to review potential offers. I think mirroring something like we've done with the Gateway Commission, where you've got a five-member citizen group that reviews offers and makes recommendations to the city council. These folks would represent our downtown. So in order to move forward on a transaction like this, there's actually a couple steps for you all to take. There is a purchase and sale agreement that is in your agenda packet. We have forwarded this to Franklin Synergy, and they are still reviewing it. So, you know, if you were of a mind to approve it tonight, we'd ask that you would give staff an opportunity to work through any minor changes that Franklin Synergy may have. Obviously, if there was any major issues, we'd have to come back to city council. Also, we would need to have a lease document. Mr. Tindall's drafted a lease document that's also been sent to Franklin Synergy, nor do we have their comments back on that yet. And then future steps would include, you know, accelerating our tax increment financing study, as well as a council appointment of a task force. So with that, Mayor, council, that is my quick summary. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I thought it would be good to update the council on how this all took place. You know, with social media and all these things nowadays, there's all kinds of rumors that fly around. But I was approached early November by Main Street to ask to look at the possibility of discussing with Franklin Synergy if this would be an opportunity or if the city was interested in it. So met with Main Street and then called Mr. Dallas Cottle with Franklin Synergy and talked to him, and he said, you need to talk with, let me have the, at that time, it would be Lee Moss with Franklin Synergy. So they set up a meeting here at City Hall. No real numbers were thrown out, but it was mainly just yes, that we could see possibility of why this would be a good thing. Mr. Lance, of course, was updated on all of this. And then they called back this first or second week of December and said, would you please come to Franklin and sit down with us? And at that point, they had given us an offer sheet of what they would sell the property for. And that's where this whole process came forward. And at that point, you know, I made no indications of what the council would do. Many times, I indicated to them that I'm one person on the council, but that I would be happy to bring any proposal forward, and that's where we are to this date. There's no conspiracy theory or anything like that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
At the end of your presentation, kind of looking into the future, can you maybe elaborate on where that goes? I mean, you know, the TIF districts and the task force, I mean, that doesn't do anything. You know, those things just offer an incentive and they just build a task force. I mean, if we decide there is something that we want to do with the property and somebody, you know, or somebody comes and offers us to buy it or whatever, what's the process, then, to actually execute some, the next transaction, the actual transaction?
Sure. I think you probably got some options there, Mr. Will Lance. I think the Gateway process has worked well. We've had both, you know, marketing of the property by the city and the Chamber of Commerce, and then word of mouth. We've also had, you know, local people who are knowledgeable about the Gateway and saw all the opportunity that was there. And so sometimes they see a sign, or they read a website, and they call us and say, we want to sit down with you and talk to you about this piece of property. I think the same thing would happen with the Franklin Synergy property. We'll, staff will then sit down just to see what is it that they're looking at. And then if there's some traction there, we'll ask them to put their idea in writing. That then goes to the Gateway Commission, that five-member citizen group, where, you know, the deal is really, you know, hammered out. You could do the same thing here, where if you all set some broad guidelines about what you want to see, if we hear enough that's consistent with those broad guidelines, that's what we would bring forward. Let me give you an example, just to make myself clear. When we got into the Gateway project, the council said, we want to see job creation, you know, higher salaries and substantial investment. So for the projects that have come forward that didn't have any job creation or weren't going to pay taxes, we've said, you know what, I'm sorry, this really isn't consistent with the vision set out with city council, let us help you find somewhere else. We would do the same thing with this, get a broad sense of what the council wanted to see, and if we heard enough that was consistent, we would start to move it through a process. The Gateway Commission makes recommendations to you on a contract, and then the council votes it up or down.
So the council, then, there has to be another council vote as far as before anything actually happens. And one of the things that strikes me about this that makes it kind of difficult for me as I think through this, and, you know, this is one of those things I still kind of halfway feel like I need a little bit more time to absorb it, is just kind of the timing of it all. You know, we've just put $75,000 aside to do a study that essentially starts with that block and goes down to Highland, and, you know, we don't know the results of that. So it's kind of like, well, you know, this is a little bit of the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart, whatever you say there, you know, to, you know, if we already had that, that would be awfully handy to kind of say, hey, this really does, we know it fits and we have a use for it. But that's sort of one of these things, it's, it's kind of, it feels like kind of a now or never deal. So, you know, the, I want to, you know, I want to mention to you that something that I wish I would have seen up there that I didn't on your presentation, and I'm just going to lay this out here for you guys. I mean, you know, everything that was listed up there was, you know, development-oriented, and I think we left off an important possibility here, and, you know, it's the possibility that we might need it, the city may need it. You know, for instance, our library right now is half the size that the state requires for our per capita. You know, we need more library space terribly. You know, as far as how we could reuse that kind of stuff, I mean, you know, I thought through, you know, the archive stuff that we keep over there, you know, in the, in the church tower building would be awfully cool if it all worked out. I mean, you know, to me, I'm less likely to want to do this project if we're talking about turning it into apartments or condos. That's not what I think we should be doing. I'm just going to, that's how I feel about it. I'm a lot more likely to do it when I think of, you know, look, we own the property beside it. We already have an investment there, we already have an asset, and, you know, if, if I had a chance to buy the lot next to me to prevent somebody from building a house in my back door, I'd try everything I could to do that, and because I think it would keep the value of what I already own. So I think there's a huge argument to me to do this because we already own a third of the block. I think the other argument to do this is because it just strategically offers possibilities. I don't, you know, I don't want to go into this thing feeling like we're doing this to carve off the tower and then build some apartments. You know, I have concerns, you know, I know everybody says, oh, we've got these people asking for downtown, and people want to come downtown and all that stuff, but, you know, you can't drive downtown already during 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I mean, it's very difficult to get around when there's cars parked on the side of the road. You put several hundred more residents right there on that thing and the judicial center, and I'm worried we, we have infrastructure problems. So I don't want to go into this thing, I mean, since there's another vote, here's kind of where I'm leaning on this. You know, the reason I asked what I asked was because I feel more comfortable doing this from a strategic standpoint and open up possibilities and protecting our current investment. But I want, you know, if we were sitting here saying, we're going to sell it, we're going to strip it up and sell it, I'm not going to, I mean, I probably won't vote for that. I'm on the record of saying it, and I'm just telling you that's how I kind of feel about it. So if that's the only way we can go with this, that so be it. That's, but that's what I want to, you know, I mean, I want to get that out on the table, kind of, that's how I feel about it after thinking about it for just a few days now, but.
I tend to go down some of the road, Rick does, as far as the free market. I understand where Shane's coming from on social media, I've been trying to keep up with it as well. But as far as a free market development in a free market world, they could tear the tower down tomorrow and build a Dollar General store there, and we would look back historically many years from now, much like I look back at James K. Polk Hotel today, and say, how did we allow that to get away? There is a significant landmark on this piece of property. For me, it means as much to the city of Murfreesboro as Big Ben to London or the Colosseum to Rome. This is a significant landmark in the city of Murfreesboro. Historically, would you say it's comparable to a Frank Lloyd Wright home, I think? Because it, it may not have had a significant event like the Oakland Mansion, but it does have a significant historical presence. It was built by one of, in 1888, by a builder who also built the Crichilow Home. As far as the church itself, the property was initially donated for the church from Hardy Murphy, I think, over across from what at one time was the Cox Memorial Building, which no longer stands. So there is a historical aspect here that I think has a significance that's, that's very valuable, that, that has a significant role in the quality of life and the character of Murfreesboro when you go to our downtown area.
I agree with that, by the way, I mean, I.
The, you were married in that church, weren't you?
I was.
There you go. And that's, that's historic.
Can I still vote on this?
But technically, any, any building in, that's over 50 years old in Murfreesboro could be considered historical, 25 years old in New York. So we've actually got a longer range of historical in Murfreesboro than they do in other places. But we, we do have the opportunity here, I think, to at least acquire the land. We already own a third of the block, it makes sense to me to go ahead and acquire the rest of it at this point. And, and where I really agree with Rick is, I'm not sure that the intentions of me, when I say this, my intentions are not to buy it and simply turn around and flip it and sell it. At that point, once we have control of the situation, I think it would be advantageous to us to step back and say, okay, do we have the need for a parking garage in this area? Do we have a need for an auditorium in this area? How much of this piece of property can we reuse? The gymnasium, the Bible classes on the backside, I don't think there's any historical, they were, they were built in 1955. Prior to that, the Bible classes met in the Princess Theater.
I also went to preschool there, by the way.
Did you ever go to the Princess Theater?
I went to preschool back then.
But, but. But, but, but you missed out on the Princess Theater because it was torn down. And, and again, it was a beautiful landmark in Murfreesboro, and, and the government doesn't need to get in the business of saving every building in Murfreesboro, but I do think that this one has, like I said, it means as much to Murfreesboro to me as Big Ben would to London, that tower does. And so I think there is a, a true concern about trying to save it for the historical value of it. Also, I think there's the opportunity for this property to be a valuable asset to the city where we'd use it for a parking garage, should it be developed as retail on the bottom level. You know, the concern with congestion, guys, they're coming. There's a lot of people coming here and they're not going to leave. And, you know, we, we keep pushing with the state. I'm trying not to drag this meeting out too long, but, but our infrastructure needs help, and we're trying to do it as quickly as we can. There are some things that maybe we need to refocus on as far as the amount of money we're spending on parks and maybe spend more money on roads and thoroughfares and that type thing. But the, but the main crux to this right here, I think, is to try and make sure that we don't allow something to happen to this valuable piece of historic property in the city of Murfreesboro that, that has happened in the past, and I just would hate to see history repeat itself in this situation.
My only comments, I appreciate everyone having an open mind and, you know, I think we get, these opportunities come around once in a lifetime. I don't think this is something that the city actively goes out to look to buy real estate, even though, you know, the property we're sitting on right now is bought from a private person. I made a list, the city parking lot that we own, Fleet Services was recently bought, Police Headquarters was recently bought two years ago from a private person that, you know, you could be argued, we interfered with the free market there buying the old medical clinic. And then in the Gateway, you know, we're criticized if we don't create white collar jobs, or we're criticized if we work with companies to bring in white collar jobs. So the Gateway, you know, we've got a project now that I think come in January that's going to be a couple million dollars of land sale out of the Gateway. We had one last year that was over two and a half million, so, you know, this is coming from someone in real estate. Projects that are that large normally don't happen by accident, by the private sector and someone who can do that. So you have to have municipalities that help along the way. And I just think, I truly think this, I think that this will be a defining moment in downtown. We're going to look back 10 years from now and say, "We made the right decision," or we're going to look back five years or 10 years from now and if we didn't do it and say, "Wow, we really missed that one." And that's, I don't want to look back and say we missed that one. And then the whole significance of what we've saved through fund balance, we've made on land sales over the last couple of years in the Gateway, I think, you know, 1.55 million's a lot of money, but that's really not, it's not significant in the whole budget. I mean, as far as what's, what we've made, that's a significant amount of money, but we can afford it and pay cash for it. The other thing I would say, they may not accept this. We're just saying, this is what our offer would be. They may come back and say, "No." You know, the bad thing about negotiating is with, we're, we do it in public, the other people who are negotiating are doing it in private. So it may come back, someone may say, "The city offered 1.55, we're going to offer you 1.75 now." So we, on the, on the exact opposite, we may be aiding the free market. So that's the tough thing with this, but I really think it's a great opportunity to partnership. MTSU has some interest, the downtown groups have some interest. It really is a, is a, I think, a great opportunity for us, for the city and the residents.
Well, I've stated this to several people, and I want to thank the mayor and all those that have been involved in thinking creatively about this. This has been a, this has been an issue for several years, a concern by those of us that are, value the history of our community. And I, listening to some of the comments earlier this evening about letting the free market or letting economics drive, you know, the decision, those of us that have been around long enough realize that we wouldn't have a courthouse if it was strictly that way, because in the eighties, there was a move to take our city, our county's courthouse down, and because it wasn't a building up to date. It was going to be hard to air condition it, it was going to be hard to have offices in it. I don't think anybody would say they regret the decision to renovate the courthouse as an iconic place for our community. A visual, I'd like for you, those of us that have been around a long time, to visualize a wrecking ball taking down that structure. A lot of hearts would break to see that happen in our community, to see that bell tower come down with a wrecking ball. I don't know what the opportunity is there, but economic forces weren't driving this, making it economically viable for someone to come in there and make something happen economically. This is a unique situation for, my estimation, for the government to play a, an important role in making it work for the benefit of the community in a broad sense. I don't know what that means, whether it's, I certainly am not going to talk against the libraries option, for obvious reasons, but there may be other opportunities as well that could be claimed and realized by the city's involvement in this and a, and a whole block in a critical area of our downtown. I, I'm grateful for those that saw this as an opportunity and pursued it. Hope that it works out for us where it can happen that way. And to that end, I'm going to move that we recommend, go forward with the recommendation of the city manager.
Let me, I know when the mayor first contacted me about this project, I wasn't full of the war at first, but with a little more education public, I've gotten a little more educated about it. Mr. Lyons sent me out and, and, you know, and I told him, I said, "I'm getting close." Because for all the reasons that you and Councilman Smotherman made, I'm going to second that motion, Bill. And, and I think the concept will work. There's going to always be congestion problems in this town as long as people keep coming. And you just have to work around it. I live on Trinity Drive and I go from school board to whatever, to whatevers, and I cut through downtown now. I don't touch my mall until I get there a certain way, and I ain't had a bit of trouble. But with more units, you better think, that may change. And I'll be older than I am now trying to navigate them streets. But I think the concept makes sense with the tax increment financing, and we need to think outside the box nowadays, people. And there are certain avenues, if you want to have some investment in your downtown, somebody got to make it. And then every once in a while, I don't believe, since I've been on this council, we've done anything like this bill. So it was kind of foreign to me. And for all the private-public type, people have their different visions about what the, what the, what coming out and I'd be doing, well, you know, you need to change your focus on, every once in a while, something comes up that's a little bit different, and this is definitely one of them. The county's making a lot of investments downtown, the city's making investments downtown, annexation's going to become kind of a little more difficult, if not already difficult. You need to invest in your downtown area to keep it vibrant. That's just the way it is, and a private person is not going to do that. Is not.
Mayor, I know there's a motion and a second. Let me just make two, two points. I mean, I think I made it, one at the podium. We have not gotten comments back from Franklin Synergy, so there may be some tweaks that they might offer. One thing that was sent to them, I believe it was last night or this morning, was that Franklin Synergy desires to stay in downtown Murfreesboro. They are hopeful that, you know, if there is a future developer down the road, that they'd have the opportunity to lease space from that future developer if that ends up happening. So I know they had asked that there be some language added to this purchase and sale agreement that said if there is a subsequent developer, that they would highly desire a downtown location. We told them we couldn't give them any of the assurances, but they were that committed to, to be in downtown. So I know that is one change that would be, be coming forward. If there's anything substantive, we need to come back to City Council. Likewise, if you approve the purchase and sale agreement and we do go to closing, there'll be a lease agreement that we would need to execute between the city and Franklin Synergy because they'd like to stay in place until the Gateway property is finished and they move out. They want to continue to operate downtown until that new branch is constructed. So I do know there's, that one change about desire to downtown location being in the purchase and sale agreement, we expect to see them come back with something and then also lease documented a subsequent council meeting. So just wanted to add that to the conversation with the motion and the second.
And Rob, I would say that I would be, I have no problem at all with them using the current building until we decide what we're going to do with the building. I'd be very hesitant to enter any agreement with anybody as to what, what might happen down the road as far as what we, we need to have control of that. And that's not something that I think Franklin Synergy Bank needs to have the opportunity to come back and say, "Well, you agreed that we need to, to have priority over some other bank that may come in and say, 'We want to be there,'" or some other business that comes in and says, "We want to be there." That's not the direction that I want us to go. So as far as making an adjustment like that, I would strongly frown on that.
Well, I think it was, the, the concept that we discussed was they would love to have a downtown presence in the future. What I said to them on the phone was, "We can give you no assurances. We don't know, you know, if you all could work something out, that's between a future developer and Franklin Synergy, but the city cannot tie its hands on what a development plan might look like, that that would be between those two priorities after a transaction with the city." So we, I understand your point and relayed much of the same.
I concur, yeah, yeah, same thing.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Wright, we have several beer permits.
We do. We have a grocery market at 2122 North Thompson Lane, Suite E. They have passed our background inspections and we are waiting for their successful completion of all the building and code inspections. Additionally, we have a restaurant at 1916 East Main Street that would like to add there. They have met our background inspections and are also waiting to finish their building codes inspections. And then we have two grocery markets, one in 1153 Portraits Boulevard and one at 2478 New Salem Highway. The background inspections meet our requirements, and they are also in the process of finishing the building codes inspections. So we would like to issue these permits upon your approval once they meet all of the required inspections from the Building Codes Department.
Will one motion get them all?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval, second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We've got a few board and commission appointments for future, for sort of a looksee for the next meeting. You've got in front of you several appointments and liaisons for the Art Committee. Then you also have a recommended appointment for the Rutherford County Wayfinding Program, which this will be Mr. Ron Bauchandran to represent in place of Dana Richardson, and we'll handle those the next meeting. Do we need to go ahead and vote on Ron now or is that?
We can go ahead.
Next meeting. Okay. Any other business from staff or City Council?
Paying in statements.
Sorry, I forgot about that. Mr. Smotherman should have reminded me.
Move for the bills.
I was going to, and this is for aviation fuels, and I think having enough fuel in your airplane's an important thing, so let's, let's go ahead and approve this. I make the motion to pass that.
A motion? In a second. Mr. Young, second and Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned. She went.